Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the July session of the Paulding County Planning Commission. At this time, if you have an audible device, anything that makes noise, please turn it off or silent. We will dispense with directions on how to participate in a public meeting, but if you're so inclined, there's copies of it should be available on the back table here in this room. Paulding County Planning Commission is a recommending body. We will hear the applications brought before it, make a recommendation at the end of the hearing. The applicant has 15 minutes to present. They may use all of that time or conserve some for rebuttal. Also out of that 15 minutes comes anybody else wishing to speak on behalf of that application. There's 15 minutes allotted for anybody who may be in opposition to or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding the same application. That is cumulative time, so if you end up wanting to speak against something or may have those questions, come to the lectern. The applicant will have to as well. Approach the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair, the chair being me. Please be mindful, if anybody's lined up behind you, to let them have a little bit of time as well. This time, I'm going to ask Mr. Robinson if there's any notes that he would like to make mention regarding the meeting and agenda items.
Yes, sir, and thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. There's three applications that have been forwarded to the August 23, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. It's application 2022-10Z by Trayton Homes, 2022-11Z by Adam Baker and Boyd Austin, and 2022-12Z, Adam Baker and Boyd Austin. The Trayton Homes is located on Rosedale Drive, and the other two applications are off Dallas-Nepo Road. Those are at this time forwarded to the August 23 Planning Commission meeting for additional staff review, and I would ask the public if they would check in with the PNC office over the time period to keep up with the application statuses. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I would ask each member of the Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, since this meeting is being streamed, that if you wish to speak during a portion of the meeting, please make sure that your microphone is turned on or you have access to one. At this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to the minutes from the previous session of this body. Is there anybody who hasn't read it or may have questions, comments, edits? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve from Mr. Henson. Do we have a second?
A second.
Have a second from Mr. Steele. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. At this time, if Mr. Robinson, you would please introduce the first application, or Ms. Littman, whichever.
Okay. First, the first action is, or the first item actually, is the public hearing. Paulding County and the cities of Brazile, Dallas, and Hiram have prepared an update to the joint comprehensive plan according to the 2018 minimum planning standards set by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs and the Georgia Planning Act of 1989.
And at this time, I would like to introduce Allison Stewart-Harris with VHB, our consultant on this project, who has a presentation on the update.
Great, thank you, Ann. Can y'all hear me okay through the mask? Apologize, I have some elderly relatives I'm seeing this weekend, so I want to try to stay healthy for her. All right. To go ahead and share our presentation, can y'all see it on your screens? All right, perfect. All right. So, over the past nine months or so, we have been working with Paulding County staff as well as the cities here in Paulding County to update the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive transportation planning. It's been a really great coordinated process, and we've also spent a little bit of time looking at five special areas across the county. I'm going to spend about five, 10 minutes today going over the study, and I'm happy to answer any of your questions. We started back in November of 2021, and we had a pretty quick process that we have to meet for our deadlines for the state, and our next step will be to submit the plan to the state in August. So, looking at the comprehensive plan, y'all already have an excellent comprehensive plan that you invested in a few years ago, so we directly updated that existing document. What we did was we paid a lot of attention to your report of accomplishments, which basically says, all right, let's look at that project list from last time, see what y'all achieved. We updated, we're looking at data and trends from the last five years, took a look at your needs and opportunities, we refined your future development map, and we also updated your community work program. I do want to share some of those revised needs and opportunities. Your existing plan had some great goal statements that we really didn't do many changes to. I'll just read those very briefly. Those are in the blue column. So, goal number one, protect and preserve community resources. A lot of what we heard about in the process was the desire to kind of keep Paulding great, keep it a beautiful rural place with some beautiful town centers, and really enhance your recreation and green space. Goal number two was to target growth. We did hear about expanding your tax space strategically, trying to look at ways to get more business and industrial in very specific areas. Goal number three, leverage and protect existing and new assets. Goal number four, create connection, this really tied directly back to your comprehensive transportation plan element. Goal number five, maintain good governance and fiscal viability. And goal six, support broadband and telecommunications. Now, that goal six might seem a little strange in there, a little more specific than the rest. That is a direct requirement by the state that we include those statements in there. This was your 2017 future development map in your previous plan. One of our big tasks was to update that. What we found was that it still held relatively true, but what we did want to show was a stronger emphasis on that line, so we really tried to emphasize it on that map and say, okay, everything to the east in blue, this is where we want to see that growth, everything west in the green, these are the areas that we think are really important to protect going forward and to limit that development. We also wanted to make sure that we are paying attention to those crossroad character areas that y'all identified before in your plan, so we took a closer look at those. And what we did was we identified specific parcels for each of these crossroads areas. Before, they were just the little plus signs, but we said, let's get a little more specific so that when y'all are trying to make decisions about zoning cases, you have a little bit more guidance and you're not making guesses. So, we've provided maps for every single crossroads, and these are just examples of what those look like. We also have created a new map, so this is the supporting policy map. We looked at some specific employment areas, again, using that feedback that we want to have a more diversified tax base, what are the areas where we really want to focus those commercial and industrial uses? That's what's in that orange color. We kept your Richland Creek Recreation Area as a special area that needed its own specific policies. And we've added a couple of new areas. These sort of blue circles here, these are the crossroads areas of influence. So, these are about half mile or so around your crossroads communities where you have a little bit of extra policy around those. And we also want to make sure that we were protecting your corridors. So, everything in pink here, that's a community character corridor. One things that we noticed in doing our special area studies is that there is sometimes a tendency for commercial uses to kind of jump around on the corridors, and one thing that we heard through the process and we observed is that y'all have really beautiful rural corridors, and there's some ways that you can use some policies to keep that character going forward. We also went ahead and updated the future land use map in coordination with the three cities, so you can see those maps here. And we updated your community work program. Again, your community work program is really just a list of projects and initiatives for the next five years. It's a very kind of long Excel sheet, so we're not going to go into all those details, but we looked at it from both the individual agencies and tied it back to our goals of balancing growth. And then we also looked at multi-agency projects, particularly, you know, how do we help the jurisdictions work together? You know, for example, Sea of Dallas Sewer, Paulding Sewer, we've got to work together on what those look like. We looked at five different areas for our special area studies. These were part, these, all these geographies were really identified in your 2017 plan for more detailed study. So, we looked at up here, you can see all the little details, one, two, three, four, and five. We want to really look at how we integrated the land use and transportation investments. Again, we want to really use these studies to clearly define what those crossroads areas are and provide some specific policy guidance. So, when you look at our report, you'll see very detailed analyses of all this, but what we did notice was that there were some trends that really applied to all of them. So, for example, you know, we felt these crossroad areas are very unique and should have specific development policies, and part of that is that half-mile kind of buffer around those for better bicycle pedestrian connectivity. Commercial uses that are kind of leapfrogging and sprawl, that's where those community character corridors came out. Again, noticing, you know, you've got some beautiful rural landscapes that are increasingly vulnerable to development, what are some policies and initiatives we can look at? We did notice a lack of connected roadways that create some congestion on your major arterials, and that there is a lack of safe walking and biking infrastructure. So, with that, we have submitted the recommendations to Ann, and she and her staff are working on integrating that into the planning document. That document will be going into the state for approval next month. We will be also continuing to coordinate with the comprehensive transportation plan process, and then working with you all to help implement some of those items from the community work program. So, with that, I'm like, I know that was a whirlwind tour, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
We have to be brief this morning.
All right.
Then I will open it up to public comment at this time. If any member of the public attending here has any questions or comments they would like to make, same process is in place, come forward to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and state your comments. Hearing none, I will now close the public comment portion of the meeting. And do we need to take a recommendation, or is this going to be the first of the two? So, we leave it as it is right now, just to make sure I'm on the same page with y'all. So, thank you very much for your time.
All right, great, thank you. Y'all made it very easy for me, thank you.
And we have the one application for consideration today. We have it before us in our packet, but it just disappeared off the screen, so. That's all it took.
That's all it took.
So, Mr. Robinson, would you please introduce the application?
The zoning application for today is 2022-21Z, application by Eric Allen Austin, requesting to rezone 274.7 acres from R2 Suburban Residential to ER Estate Residential to develop 19 10.5-plus acre state lots. Property is located in land lots 11, 114, 167 through 169, 181 through 183, 238 and 239 of District 19, Section 3. The project site address is 3085 Willow Springs Road, it's in Commission Post 4. Staff has recommended approval with eight stipulations, and we've had an email which concerns, it's in your packet, and then three phone calls with questions and concerns. And I wanted to note one thing from the staff analysis, which would be Section D, that staff's opinion is that the applicant's rezoning proposal will not result in a use that would cause excessive burdensome use of existing streets. I wanted to correct that. And the applicant is present.
Do you want to go ahead and announce your recusal? You want to recuse yourself?
No, no.
Okay. If the applicant will please come forward, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. There should be a, there should be a board to sign in on. State your name.
It's Eric Allen Austin.
Thank you very much, and make your presentation.
I wasn't aware that I was going to be, that I needed to make a presentation, but Chris pretty much stated everything. Like you said, it's 274 acres that we intend to do 10-plus acre estate lots. It'll be luxury homes of no less than 2,000 square foot. It'll have a community HOA and a private, private road. Each home will have, each house will have its own individual well for their water source and septic for their waste systems, and the power company's Greystone.
Are you aware of the eight stipulations that they have listed, and are you agreeable to those stipulations?
Yes.
We've had one printed email that it is asking about the number of, it says resident, I think it means residences, how many houses per lot?
We just intend for it to be a single house per lot.
Per residence?
Yes.
Per lot?
Yes.
Are you agreeable to, is there already in place, I'm still familiarizing myself with some of these zoning categories under the new zoning ordinance, is there an allowance under there for multiple residences, houses on an individual lot that's under this category?
You could only have one single family home on one property or one lot.
So, a stipulation to that would not necessarily be necessary?
In this case here, they're showing 19 parcels or 19 proposed lots. If that were to change and increase, they would be subject to come back probably through this process.
Are there any questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
I have a question for Mr. Robinson. On that same note, with that zoning category, can these lots be subdivided, or are there a minimum 10 acre? What is the minimum? Because what you're looking at, Mr. Palmer, would be if we stipulated that they can't be subdivided beyond these 19.
And that could be a stipulation that could be added. In this case, a lot of times, I mean, we have a site plan that's, we can consider specific as part of the ordinance. The minimum lot size in the estate residential was two and a half acre is a minimal lot size. So, if that's a stipulation you want to add on here, I would have no objection.
Is that a stipulation you won't consider?
I personally think it should be, just for, we're showing 19 10-plus acre lots, and wants to keep anybody from buying them and start splitting them up. When you go from 19 to 60, when you've got 200-plus acres.
Would that be something that you're agreeable to as an added stipulation?
Yes.
Any further questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant? Ms. Eber?
Yes, I think this sounds great, I think it's going to be a lovely project. What is your price point?
We're hoping it'll probably be in the, with the land, 600 to 800,000.
Okay. And do you have any pictures or anything of what you're looking to build? Is it going to be, and I don't know, Chris, what the ordinance says, does it have to be so much brick, stone, stucco, all of that? I would imagine that price range.
Oh, yes. I mean, we haven't done anything like that yet, but, you know, gotten together a package like what you're talking about, but we do have plans that other houses that we've built in the area, they'll be, that these will be similar to.
And it says minimum is 2,000 square feet, well, I can imagine it would, what is your, what are you looking at, a range of square footage?
2,000, and, you know, they could go as large as they want to do, but, you know.
Okay, are you, are they going to be custom homes that people are coming in and building?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's not something that you as a builder have these plans that you've established?
Right, exactly.
So, you are, basically, you've got the lot, and then they're going to be, you're going to be sitting down with them, and are they going to bring their plan and you build it? Is that, how does that work?
Yes, that would be, they would bring a plan, and we would build it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Along with the same question, are you the builder of all 19 lots, or can they bring additional builders?
They could bring additional builders, I believe.
So, are you marketing the lots for sale?
Yes, but it'll have the HOA, which will have stipulations in, in that as to what they can build, and, you know, as far as the square footage and the aesthetics of it, so that will be in.
Do you have the, do you have the HOA documents ready yet, or?
No. We, we deal with Judy Bagby, and she said we needed to go through this process first before she did all the, that end of it.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Before I go to the Board of Commissioners, are any questions from the school board?
No, we have welcome this concern.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Under staff recommendations, Chris, it says the minimum dwelling size is 1,600 square feet, that's the requirement in the zoning districts, is that correct?
That is correct.
And African States, he's going to build 2,000 square foot minimum, does that need to be stepped?
I would, if that's, if that's the desire of the board, that would be a stipulation.
Would you be okay with that? I think that needs to be specified in a, in a stipulation.
My question is just, as far as those lots 9 through 11, I'm trying to figure out the easement route to get to it, is it coming up the, I can't really tell on this paper, but is it coming up the power line there or something?
It'll, it'll go through, I'm trying to look at them.
I just see how you access a lot, lots.
It'll come through between two of the lots, so that, where the cul-de-sac is on the first page, it'll go through between, I believe it was lot 10 and 11, is where the easement road will go through, back to those, the back, the bigger tracks back there. Between 12 and 8.
Yeah, so it'll be between lots 12 and 8.
I have a question also. There was a private road, I understand that we go through this. What protects the county from all the neighborhood getting together and deciding it's a public road and needs to be paved by the county?
Just from my experience in dealing with it, the only roads that are going to be maintained by the county are those that the county board commissioners have accepted for maintenance. So, they would have to be a proposal from the homeowners, once the development is completed, to ask or petition the board of commissioners to take on the maintenance and upkeep of the roadway. And then by vote, and I'm sure Mr. Phillips can correct me if I'm wrong, but by vote, you would have to affirm that or deny it.
Yes, Mr. Palmer's correct. It's entirely up to the county as to whether or not they would accept it if submitted as a county road.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Steele?
To the county DOT team, Mr. Johnson, is this proposed as 60-foot a right-of-way, or is it proposed as a private road?
Again, if it's a private, it's a private road, it would be a private easement.
Okay, right. So, which leads to the next question, aren't these all off of an easement? And then our easement requirements?
Again, it would be, it's private property.
Right, right, and what I'm referring to, back to development regs for easements, or Ms. Littman, Mr. Robinson?
I think you're referring to like a private easement subdivision, where there's a minimum 30, 30 feet of private easement to maximum of three homes.
Which is what? Yeah, which would be the.
Right, that, that would probably not apply. We, let me go back. With this district, it does allow that the project access can be served by private or public roads, and that they can be paved or they can be non, non asphalt service, and that they can use well ditches in lieu of curb and gutter. The, and since all the lots but three will have frontage on this private street, we feel like it would meet the intent of the ER district. The three larger lots that will utilize an easement back to the private road, we're asking that that easement follow the road all the way back to Willow Springs to meet that development standard.
Okay.
I hope that helps.
It, it does, I was just bringing the point up, just from having some of these before. Also to the, to DOT, the standard of the road, looking at public safety, fire trucks, ambulances, what, what type of road build, what we require for private roads?
Again, I believe that's one of the stipulations in there. They provide sufficient access for public safety to develop stipulation, and again, I believe it can be a gravel road, it doesn't have.
And under estate residential, this would still have to go before the plan review as a project development, is that correct?
I believe that's also under stipulation number one.
So, the regulations that the county has in place for development would be applied at that point to ensure safety, public safety access?
Exactly, we go through the Development Control Committee with all the applicable departments looking at their areas regarding the development regulations and how they reply to this situation.
And as well as the quality of that development, holding up under traffic, that type of?
And even if it's a private street, we look at the standards of a public street, we look at the same geometrics, the same site residences, et cetera.
I have one, I have one question. As far as developers, first time we've seen one like this, how is the fire safety going to be, issue going to be with it being on wells, and you require to have 1,000-foot twin fire hydrants, will there be a requirement for a line into the subdivision?
That, as far as I'm understanding, that there wouldn't be a requirement.
So, that's something that they'll need to understand when they buy these lots, that they don't have, their insurance rate's going to be higher, in other words, what I'm saying, because they don't have the 1,000-foot twin hydrants, or the availability of a hydrant.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, Mr. Stover?
Well, there's not even county water on Willow Springs Road right there, so there's no county water out there to begin with, so you can run a line, but it'd be dry.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners to the applicant?
So, Mr. Austin, either by Eric or Allen?
Allen.
Allen. You said you built other homes in that area?
Yes.
I've seen a couple of them, I don't know if they're yours or not, the Tidmore House and the Summer Hour House. You know, I've been in both of those, but you've been the first one to apply for this estate residential, I'm just so glad to see it, because we've had so many developers come to Paulding County, and they just want density, density, density. So, I'm already trying to talk my wife into buying one of those lots out there.
It's awesome. It's beautiful out there.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant? Hearing none, you may take your seat. You have time remaining, we'll ask if anybody else wants to speak on behalf at this time, so if anyone wishes to speak on behalf of this application, please come forward, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. Just to confirm, you're speaking on behalf of?
Um, we're in the township, I want to, first, we are a little confused if y'all was talking about our neighborhood in that, 2022-12Z, is that, was it?
That's the one.
Right beside Brimley Township.
That one was one of the ones that was for.
That's.
That's what we're talking about now?
No.
No, it has been administratively.
We wasn't sure.
That's okay, that one has been forwarded to the August meeting. That's okay, that one has been forwarded to the August meeting. So at this time, I'm asking just for clarity, anybody wishing to speak in favor of or on behalf of this application, please come forward, sign in, state your name, address your comments to the chair. Seeing none, is there anyone here that may have questions, comments, or concerns or wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Please come forward, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
My name is Joe Coombs and I have to own property and live on Willow Springs Road. And part of the, my property butts up against this area that's in question. I don't think I'm speaking on, on behalf of or against, I just, I just had some questions. The first question is, is there only going to be one access to this subdivision?
Direct your comments to me, sir, we'll take care of the questions afterward, that's all right.
So my question is, there only one right-of-way or one road into this subdivision?
So far, that's the intent, but.
The reason I ask that is there's also a new road over on Spring Road that it looks like it joins the, this would be north, south, east side of this particular property. And I was wondering if there was any connection in those at all.
I will ask.
Okay, and I guess my final question is, the map that's here and apparently the commissioners and you have been referring to other diagrams or other information, is that available to the public?
Yes, it is.
And, and how would I go about?
You will see, Mr. Robinson, after the meeting, we have to provide that to you.
All right, that's all I had.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that may have comments, questions, concerns, or wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none, Mr. Austin, would you please come back to the lectern? And again, feel free, staff, Mr. Robinson, anybody to jump in on this. There is only one planned roadway into the subdivision, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and is there any affiliation with the new road off of Spring Road that?
No, the, the properties do back up to each other, but there's no.
What about Willow Path, that does touch Willow Path?
Yeah, that's, that's a private owned area. I believe that's Corey Leggett's property. He owns most of that, but that road ends where the lake bed is.
So you have no arrangement to use any other entrance or exit other than what you, you'll be building off of the roadway?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions to the applicant before we move on? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you very much, sir. So at this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2022-21-Z. Please keep in mind, there are eight listed stipulations. We have two suggested stipulations. One is to not allow any further subdivision of lots from the 19 that are being requested. And secondly, that the 2,000 square foot minimum area of the houses be the minimum. I don't think I said that right, but that we limit the houses to a 2,000 square foot minimum. That's better, right? So at this time, if anybody wishes to make a motion, please do so with those things in mind.
I make a motion to approve with the eight printed stipulations, with the additional stipulations as well of no subdividing beyond the 19 lots. And all residents must be 20,000 square feet heated space.
2,000.
2,000 square feet heated space.
Well, I know I'm not buying a 20,000 square foot home. All right, got that.
We just had to get Mr. Carl Michael's price up over there.
A motion to approve from Mr. Steele with the eight listed stipulations, two added stipulations of no further subdivision of the property beyond the 19 requested, and a minimum build of 2,000 square foot. Do we have a second? I have a second from Mr. Aston, all in favor. Motion passes six, zero, and one. Well, thank you very much, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn from Ms. Seaver, I have a second from Mr. Leggett. Mr. Henson, do you have something? Oh yeah, that's a very good point. We will be forwarding to the decision from, or the recommendation from the planning commission to tonight's meeting at six, here, same room for the board of commissioners. And all in favor for the adjournment? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Leo, you thought I forgot, didn't you? Have a good day.